And for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Hyberger.
I pose allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Cindy. With that we'll, if anybody needs help with a listening device, Robert can help them up front. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly on the corner there. And please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done that. So thank you. With that we'll jump into routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have two motions in two seconds.
Take your pick.
Take your pick is right. Anybody have any changes to the agenda? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of November 26, 2013, and the joint minutes of November 26, 2013.
I'll move both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both of the regular and the joint meeting minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $215,310.11.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel actions. A is a motion to approve the routine personnel.
Good morning Carrie.
Good morning.
Is there a motion to pass routine action?
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to recognize significant employees' anniversaries for December 2013.
Good morning, I have four anniversaries for you this morning. Roger Stanzel and John Crittenen, both with the highway, celebrating 20 years of service, wanted to be here this morning, but unfortunately they were understandably detained. We'll see if we can get them back for you next week. We also have Barbara Janza at the senior records technician in the registered deeds office. Barb is here and she's celebrating 15 years of service. Congratulations to her. And we also have Vicky Raker at the public defender's office, celebrating five years, and I don't believe she was able to attend today. But our thanks go out to all four of those individuals.
Barb, thank you for your service. You've been an outstanding employee and Julie's proud to be part of your team, so to speak. It's a great combination of experience that makes the county work so well. So thank you.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for November 2013. Carrie Dever.
Another big month, 223 volunteers throughout county. So as always, our thanks go out to them. It's a large group of people helping us out each month.
Yep. It's an awesome group, very dedicated. Thank you Carrie.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatements today, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, and no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Now's the time for anyone who would like to come forward and speak about any item that is not on the agenda. Mark?
Chair Benning, members of the commission, my name is Mark Lee with the Sioux Falls area Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the chamber takes a vital interest in the activities of its governmental units in and around Sioux Falls. And I'm pleased today to introduce a new member of our team. Mike Lynch has joined our team as of yesterday. And Mike will be working with me in the public affairs area. So you will be seeing a lot of Mike. And I just wanted to get a name to the face so that you all recognize him and you know you have another resource at the chamber.
Oh, thank you Mark.
Thank you.
Mike, would you like to come forward and just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Thank you for the welcome. My name is Mike Lynch. I am a recent resident to Sioux Falls. I was actually born here, but moved to the Colton Chester area at the age of three and lived there until I graduated high school from Tri Valley. I know, I thought you were a Tri Valley person. So have lived in Madison, rural Madison, for the last 18 years. I taught high school English and Spanish. And then most recently, I worked at East River Electric Power Cooperative for five and a half years. Have done some marketing consulting here in Sioux Falls for the last couple of months. And I'm just happy to be with the chamber.
Awesome. Well, thank you for being here and welcome to Sioux Falls.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? If not, we will have to move to item 11 since it's not 9:15.
Item 11 is consider a motion to approve the 2014 Minnehaw County liquor license renewal applications. And the auditor's office has received applications from the following establishments. The Baltic Corner, retail on sale liquor, Bottoms Up, retail on sale liquor, Brex Bar and Grill, retail on sale liquor, Dells Rocky Run Golf Course, retail on sale liquor, The Alibi, retail on sale liquor, Monarch Steakhouse, retail on sale liquor, Monarch Package Store, a package off sale liquor license, The Red Rock Bar and Casino, retail on sale liquor, River Ridge Golf Club, retail on sale liquor, the Sioux Empire Fair Association, retail on sale liquor, Wild Water West Water Park, retail on and off sale wine, Old 77 Bar and Grill, retail on sale liquor, the Safari Bar and Grill, retail on sale liquor, and the Riviera by Rocco's, retail on and off sale wine license application. The state's attorney's office, planning department, and sheriff's offices have all reviewed the applications. And there are no objections or concerns that were reported. Today, we are requesting your approval of the 2014 liquor license and wine license renewal applications.
Thank you Cindy. Questions Cindy? Have there been any staying failures or any violations?
No, there haven't.
None?
Nope, none.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Cindy, the only one that's new basically is the Riviera by Rocco's, right?
That's correct.
That's the only one.
That's correct. Well, it's actually a renewal. It was just new in 2013. This is a renewal for 2014.
Okay. With that, is there any comments or motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license renewal applications. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Okay, we'll move on to item 12, which is to consider a motion to supplement $2,019.14 from the general fund to the planning budget, ASN 18264, education and training, representing reimbursement from South Dakota Building Officials Association to attend the National ICC Conference. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, representing the planning department. And this is for training and represents reimbursement for a scholarship. Our chief building inspector, chief building official, received from the South Dakota Building Officials. He attended the conference in September. They gave us our reimbursement in end of October. And this is just sort of a bookkeeping, putting it back in the ASN for the, that it came out of, for the education and training. They paid for everything except his meals, which we paid for for the few days that he was there.
Thank you Scott. Anyone have any questions with Scott?
Make a motion to approve this supplement, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the supplement to the general fund. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 13 is consider a motion to approve a resolution of sale for tax deed number 2556 and to authorize the county treasurer to issue a quitclaim deed. Bob Lutz?
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Lutz from the auditor's office. The annual tax deed sale was held on Saturday, November 23. To show you what we auctioned off here, tax deed number, tax deed number 2556, RDID 29189, was the only property advertised to be sold at the auction. Minimum bid was set at $15,000 and the property sold at $37,000. There were six registered bidders at the sale. There was another guy who got there a little bit late. But, so we had a total of seven people looking at it. Considering there's only one property being auctioned off, we're very pleased to have some competitive bidding. I'm requesting that you accept the highest bid of $37,000 and approve the resolution of sale.
Thank you Bob. Does anyone have any questions?
Make a motion to approve the resolution and authorize to issue a quitclaim deed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sale of the tax deed, tax deed number 2556. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Item number 14 is a briefing on the proposed Minnehaw County Highway Department's snow and ice removal policy. DJ Boothey.
Maybe we should have waited a month. We wouldn't have snow this morning.
Yeah, right. Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. The policy that was sent out in the briefing memo was drafted by Highway Department personnel upon review of several different policies, similar policies from different agencies. And, and using those as kind of templates and then having a series of meetings with our staff that is in charge of snow removal operations and also staff that completes actual snow removal operations. So kind of combining the history of how we've done things in the past with some of the guidelines that other agencies are, are using to complete their snow removal operations. It was our intent to provide a snow and ice removal policy as a direction, both to our employees and our staff, and also as, as information to the public so they understand what our intent is and what our expectations are for snow removal. It's not an all-inclusive policy because weather is very unpredictable and, and changes all the time. Just speaking this morning with Cindy before the meeting started, we normally would have been in at 5 o'clock on a day like today to get ahead of traffic and the storm and things like that. Tonight, or this morning, we didn't come in at 5 because things weren't supposed to start as early as they did. And so that's just an example of how things can change. And so a policy like this can't necessarily be black and white that says we will do certain things because things change and we gotta adjust. And so the policy as it's drafted right now was sent out. The policy does not define a level of service, again because weather is so unpredictable. However, it provides what our intent is. And our intent is to provide reasonable ice control while taking into consideration the availability of labor, equipment, and funding. The city of Sioux Falls on, on a major storm event can easily spend several hundred thousand dollars. And that's because they're out there doing 24-hour, 24-hour operations during the storm event and then after the storm event to pick up snow from behind the curb. Our department, I doubt, has ever spent several hundred thousand dollars on, on a single event just because we're running our routes during the storm event and then any kind of ice cleanup afterwards. But we don't have to continue going back and picking up snow. We just put it in the ditch. During some winter seasons, when there is so much snow that it is piled up in the ditch very high, almost like a tunnel, we do go back and do more maintenance to try to keep the roadway clear. But we certainly don't do that on a regular basis. I'll go through, I think, some of the, the highlights of what our policy says. And then if you guys have any questions either during that or, or afterwards, feel free to ask those questions. But I'm not going to read through the entire policy as it is, three pages long. Like I had indicated before, this policy is, is sort of a guideline. Departure from this policy, it says, may be necessary to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the traveling public. Is, again, not our intent to have a black and white policy. If our crew needs to do something out of the ordinary, let's say, to help somebody that, that is in danger, we're certainly going to do that. Not, not avoid helping somebody because our policy says we can't. One of the things that our policy covers is operation hours. Just informative saying that our normal winter working hours are Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:00. And during typical winter weather, we do have snow removal operations occurring during the hours at 5:00 AM and dusk. We have exceptions to that for emergencies. And we will certainly respond to emergency, fire, health, or fire medical, or police, emergency response, any time of the day. Operations in adverse conditions, equipment will not be dispatched in low visibility or conditions such that the risk of the operators or other motorists outweighs the benefits. An example of that would be during a blizzard, especially towards the end of the day when, or the very beginning of the day when visibility might be very low. If, if we can't see what we're trying to plow, then, then it's very risky for us. And it could very easily result in, in injury to somebody that might be stalled out on the road if we're out driving around and plows and not able to see. And so we, we will limit operations in some adverse conditions. What we consider adverse conditions might be a little different than what the normal traveling public might consider adverse conditions. We certainly hope that some people are staying at home while we go operate and do our normal snow removal operations. So we wouldn't consider a normal storm event adverse conditions for, for our snow removal equipment. Route priorities, because of the level of staffing that we provide, we have to prioritize what, what we're doing. And we've identified four different priorities for our, our snow removal operations. First being major collector routes. These are county major collector roads and, and primary commuter routes. And because of the staffing that we do have, we do have 20 snow removal routes currently. And we're able to do snow removal on both our major collector routes and our minor collector routes somewhat simultaneously. And so the minor collector routes are the remaining paved county roads that are not collector routes. And, and like I said, typically, we're able to send people out to both the major and the minor collector routes at the same time. Because of staffing, PTO and things like that are a sickness. If, if we aren't able to staff all of our snow removal routes, we will prioritize major collector routes before we do the minor collector routes. And then after we're completed working on our, our county paved roads, we will do other county government buildings as requested, as long as we have the availability of equipment and manpower. Examples of that would be the courthouse, the administration building, JDC, other buildings that, that the county owns or county property. Right now, because of the way that our equipment is set up, we are able to mobilize for the courthouse, basically at the same time as we're mobilizing for our county paved roads, because we're not sending a plow truck down here. We're sending a pickup that has a smaller sander on it. And so basically after the county's contractor comes and completes snow removal at the county, we're able to send our guys over and, and help with salting some of the parking lots. And then the fourth priority for the route priorities would be local roads. These roads are typically township roads, but they can also be municipalities or private roads. We do not make a practice of going to local roads. In fact, by statute, we should not be doing these roads. However, if there's emergency situations, again, we will deviate from any kind of policy stuff that's written on paper in order to provide emergency assistance. And so an example would be, I think, three or four years ago now, we had a lot of snow. And our guys tell me that they were going to helping clear out some of the smaller municipality roadways in order to just get fire service to certain, certain roads. Our equipment is a lot bigger and, and has better capabilities than some of the townships. A lot of the townships just use their motorators for their snow removal. Moving on, level of service. Like I said, we don't necessarily define a, a level of service with this, but we do talk about level of service. We don't have a bare pavement policy. And we state that our roads may not be free of snow and ice. I wouldn't call it a liability waiver by any means, but just stating that, especially like in the city of Sioux Falls, you can pretty well depend on, on having bare pavement for the majority of their snow events. And, and just because of finances and manpower and, and practicality, we don't pursue a bare pavement policy. The city, I've been told, their goal is to have white residual calcium chloride on their roads after the snow event is over and before any other snow event. And it just simply wouldn't be cost effective for us to do that on our roads. We do have some considerations for general snow and ice removal. Anti-icing, snow removal and ice removal may be limited to daylight hours. That's something that like the school districts and, and traveling public should expect. We don't do our, our normal operations during the nighttime. Depending upon current and forecasted weather conditions, snow and ice will be removed as best is practical. And basically what that means is, is we're not going to spend all day on, on one road if, if we can't get the ice off. We'll do the best that we can and then we'll move on to other roadways. Special consideration may be given to critical intersections, hills, curves, and other hazardous areas. And if, if all 347 miles of our pavement was covered in ice, we simply couldn't cover that whole 347 miles in a day. And so what our guys will do is they'll go out to critical areas like the stop signs and the intersections and where there's hills, where we know there's trouble spots. And we'll hit, hit those trouble spots first to try to take care of any major incidents that would happen because of an event. And then we'll go back after that and try to clean up the rest of the roadways. Rural mailboxes, the next section there, is something that is an interesting discussion when the highway superintendents get together. The, the argument of some counties is that they don't care if snow knocked down a mailbox or if their plows hit a mailbox. That just means that the property owner had their mailbox too close to the road and they won't fix them. What our standard practice has been in the county and which, and what I'd like to pursue in the future is that if, if we negatively impact the structure of a mailbox or if we knock it down either because we hit it physically with our equipment or if we go by too fast as we're plowing and the snow knocks it over or, or breaks it or dents it or something like that, that we go and we replace it with a new mailbox, a new post, and, and we take care of that for the property owners. We can go through either, anywhere from 15 to 45 or so mailboxes in a year. And they're relatively inexpensive for us to fix. If we spend $1,000 or $2,000 on mailboxes in a, in a winter season, the property owners that had their mailboxes hit are gonna feel a lot better had we just said, you had your mailbox too close to the roadway and I'm sorry. And that's a pretty cheap insurance policy to keep the public happy. And, and we certainly don't want to get into any arguments whose fault it might have been because we do have pretty big equipment that goes by, by the small little mailboxes. So I think that we should just continue to keep replacing the mailboxes. And, and it says in this paragraph here how we go about doing that and, and what the timeframe might be. The next section, obstructions. There are some obstructions that tend to be left in the right of way at times. And, and in the winter season, when obstructions are left in the right of way, that can cause a significant amount of drifting on the road, which creates trouble spots for us. Ice is more likely to form when there's drifting on the roadway. And so a big one is hay bales. If farmers stack their hay bales along the right of way line or we allow them to hay the ditch and then they leave the hay bales there, that can cause problems for us. Also, if, if vehicles are left either in the roadway if they break down, or alongside of the roadway if they break down, or if they pull into a driveway or a field approach, if they're broken down or if they're lost or anything like that. This addresses how the county may remove the hay bales after November 1st in order to prepare for the winter season. And that's, that's typical throughout the state. The state DOT does something similar and, and several counties do that too. It says that the county will not be liable for damage to all their stranded vehicles on a traveled portion of the roadway or other obstructions which will interfere with snow and ice removal. What we typically do if there's a stranded vehicle that, that is not occupied is we'll call 911 or the sheriff's office and arrange for that vehicle to be towed. On private roads, this was covered a little bit earlier when I, when I talked about local roads. But private roads are, are developments where the roadway is not, or the right of way is not owned by any government entity. It's a private roadway. We will not operate any snow removal equipment on private roads. An exception to this policy is, again, for law enforcement or medical response teams. Of course, if there's an emergency and we're directed by law enforcement or some medical staff, we'll do anything that we can to open up a roadway. The last section of the policy is snow placed on the roadway. A lot of times we have landowners that will take their, their tractor or whatever kind of equipment that they have, and, and they'll clear their driveway by plowing down their driveway and then continuing straight across the highway and putting their snow in the ditch on the opposite side of the roadway. And any snow that's dumped or plowed or pushed across the roadway typically leaves a little bit of snow on the roadway, which can create a pretty serious hazard for both the traveling public and also our own snow removal equipment. In addition, their operation going back and forth can create a hazard if there's traffic on that roadway as they're trying to cross it with their snow removal equipment. And so we're going to be working with Ken and Kirsten to draft some sort of ordinance that allows the highway department, once the property owners have been notified, if they continue to not remove that snow within a reasonable time, the highway department can mobilize and, and remove the snow and ordinance would ensure that that property owner can be billed. And I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, Kirsten, that's allowed right now by state law, but we would have to actually take them to court prior to having them being billed? I think that's how I understood that.
If I, if I may, yeah, right, right now it's a general obstruction statute that, that actually defines it, you know, as a class one misdemeanor that would require criminal prosecution with that burden be sustained. I've talked to DJ and I think you can enact an ordinance authorizing the highway department to, to clear whatever obstructions that issue and charge the property owner. But I believe you do need to enact an ordinance to have that remedy available to you. You can consider that at an upcoming meeting once something is drafted. But you would have to pass something, in my opinion, to recover under that method.
Good. It's some, something similar to what we do occasionally. When there's an accident that damages a, a bridge railing, for example, we go and we make the repairs of the railing, obviously, and then we build the insurance company of the at-fault vehicle. And just to try to recover some of our expenses. Similarly, when a landowner is essentially breaking the law by leaving snow on the roadway during their snow removal of their private property, we want to be able to recover some of our expenses for having to go back. And I think naturally, landowners will catch on to this and refrain from doing that in the future if that happens. So that's a, a quick summary, I think, of, of the proposed policy. I'd be interested to hear any comments or questions that any of you have.
Thank you DJ. Any questions for DJ, Commissioner Barth?
I just have a question for Kirsten. Sorry.
Jeff first, go ahead. Jeff first. Go ahead.
Okay. DJ, when we go through a small town on the county highway, do we lift the blade, like going through Baltic on Lovely Avenue?
Yes and no. In the past, we never did lift the blade. And it would maybe vary between municipalities, because some are bigger than others. For example, Brandon, we lift. A lot of times, the edge of a municipality is a turnaround point. And so if we do go into the municipality to go to a turnaround, we'll keep our plows down. If we have to actually go all the way through, similar to like, I don't think we go through Baltic, but if we went through Crooks, we've told our guys that they can leave their blades down. We typically don't drop chemical or salt in those areas, because they have their own practices. But as far as keeping the plow down, we're okay with that.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I was just going to ask, excuse me, Kirsten, if you had reviewed it, if you had any concerns.
I have no concerns. I've reviewed it already. And besides those additional remedies needing to be passed by ordinance, I don't have any other legal concern.
Commissioner Barth?
One other thing, I guess, on those mailboxes, they're all supposed to be breakaway these days, isn't that right? So those ones that are out there with the brick outhouse attached to them, those aren't quite covered.
That's correct. And that's another item that you'll be considering in the future as a commission through our signing program. We're obviously not going to knock down a brick mailbox with a little bit of snow unless one of our guys hits it with a wing or something like that. I hope that doesn't happen. But through the signing program, there is a requirement that has actually been lifted because of other counties having problems with the requirement. But we're still considering complying with the requirement. The FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, has standards on breakaway devices within the clear zone of the traveled right of way. And the majority, probably all of those brick mailboxes, don't meet the breakaway standard. And so through the signing program, any obstruction within the right of way that's not breakaway shall be removed and replaced with breakaway structures. So that means that any really nice mailbox created out of brick needs to be removed and replaced with a breakaway mailbox. A lot of counties were having political problems with doing that. And so the DOT removed that requirement from the signing program. But we feel that that rule and guideline is there for a reason, and it's our duty to follow it. It's my duty by state law to follow our rules and guidelines. But we are going to give the commission the option of pursuing the removal of those. I don't think there's a lot in the county. I would say probably 10 or less.
I just don't want to have to replace any of those with like.
Right. We're certainly not going to replace them with like, because that would be illegal. They can have them along their property line, but I don't think the post office would be very happy about that.
Other questions? Thank you, DJ. This is a briefing. If there's anyone from the public who would like to make comments, we would listen to those now. Otherwise, we will have this again next week, I believe, on the 10th for adoption. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to item number 10, which is a hearing to consider drainage permit number 13-71, application submitted by Greg and Karen Schultz to conduct agricultural drainage on the south half northwest quarter of Section 15, Township 102 North, Range 52 West in Humboldt Township. Scott Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Scott Anderson, representing the planning department. And today, we're having a hearing on a drainage application 13-71. This is a request that was brought in, that was submitted by Greg and Karen Schultz, and was brought in by Steve Becker to do some drainage work, drainage project in Section 15 of Humboldt Township. This is properties located basically at the southeast corner of Humboldt, and I have a little map here that we'll look at. You can see the city of Humboldt, the city limits, and then this shows the approximate area that the applicant would like to tile. A notice of this hearing was sent out on December 3rd to all the downstream property owners within one-half mile of the outlet of the proposed drainage project. There were three property owners. The water will flow under an existing driveway that's owned by Steve Elias, and then it will cross land owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife into Beaver Lake, which you can see at the edge of the screen encompasses in the circle. All the property owners signed it, but not U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They did send a letter indicating that they would not attend the meeting today. So I don't want anyone to think that it was the snow or ice that caused them not to make it today. They had no intention of showing up. I did make a staff visit on the 20th and took some pictures for you, and I'll show those to you now. The tile line outlets are being placed in areas that are typically wet, and we can go back. If you look at, if we compare these two slides, you easily can see the area that where they would like to do the work sort of follows an area that is wet. Where the tile outlet comes out, you'll notice there's probably a 40 to 60-foot drop that it comes down and then goes into Beaver Lake. So there is very, very good drainage there once it gets past the Elias's driveway. So we'll go over the pictures now for you. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Once again, this is what they're proposing. This is standing on the road, which is 467th Avenue, and I'm looking southeast. Up in the very corner on the horizon, you can see the Elias's house and barn. This is, once again, now this is looking basically east northeast along that existing drainage way. Where the grass is located is where they'd like to put the tile. This once again shows the property. Now I'm sort of looking northwest back towards Humboldt. This, you can see the Elias's driveway. This is between their two, their house and their egg barn structure. Mr. Becker indicated to me that when they built this, recently built this house, they installed a piece of tile underneath the driveway, so it will not disturb or have to, their driveway won't have to be torn up. This is basically standing at the outlet of that property, looking southeast. You can see the lake and the nice ravine drop-off as it goes towards the lake. And once again, you can see the lake. And this shows you sort of the elevation. There's the county Durango. You can see that it's parked on the driveway. The proposed drainage would outlet where that culvert is and flow down this ravine and into Beaver Lake. And I'll go back to the, go back to the this. It's staff's findings that the proposed maintenance and the tile lines will be placed in traditionally wet areas that function as part of the same watershed. And we are recommending, staff recommends to the drainage board that you approve the drainage permit 1371. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And I know that Mr. Becker's here, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone have any questions for Scott? Would the applicant like to make any comments? And you do need to identify yourself.
My name is Steve Becker, 45809, Highway 38, Humboldt. I've been farming this property for about 20 years. And where we're going to put this tile, there is old existing tile that's been verified by the NRCS. Also, there's a ditch that runs from the west to the east, and it disccharges into the tile inlet, the old one. So all this property had been drained at one time, but the tile no longer functions and hasn't since I've farmed it. And it's just a matter of replacing and improving what was originally there.
Thank you, Steve. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Becker? Commissioner Barth?
Steve, do you have any of your land that's currently flooded by that lake, then?
Yes, about 45 acres.
Okay. And that's been for a couple of years now, right?
It's been for several years, yes.
Okay. Those grass waterways, are you going to do away with them with this?
Yes. The one, the one that starts at the west road and goes east, that one will be done away with. There is a grass waterway from the outlet, goes north, probably 100 yards. That one will not. It's too deep. I mean, it's not something you want to fill in. It's an existing ditch, and I won't, I'm not, I don't plan on cleaning it. It's a grass waterway, kind of filters any excess when you get real heavy rainfall.
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Sure.
Steve, it seems to me, I saw where, when they built the new school in Humboldt, that on the southeast part of the city, they had water problems, too, with drainage. Does that affect your land there?
Not so much what they did with the school, but when they added on to the north side of the cemetery. They redirected some water that normally didn't get out of the property, and they routed it around the cemetery, and that comes in on the west side of my property.
Did they ever ask you about dumping water on your land?
No, they didn't. I questioned them, and they said, well, who would complain? It's for the church. I said, well, not everybody belongs to this congregation, so.
No complaints from the people in the cemetery?
No.
Any other questions for Mr. Becker? Scott, can you clarify something for us? Obviously, Mr. Becker's the owner, but the applicants from Greg and Karen Schultz?
They signed the application, and Mr. Becker is serving as basically their representative. But they, Mr. and Mrs. Schultz did sign the application, and that's what's required. So it's not unusual where the tenant sometimes sort of handles these things for the owner.
Okay. Just making sure we do it the right way. Any other questions?
Actually, if I may, a brief one for Scott. You mentioned the Fish and Wildlife Services and attending. Did they articulate any reason why they wouldn't sign the downstream waiver?
It's just typically not their policy to promote anything but natural drainage.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve drainage permit 13-71. Anyone like to make any comments from the audience? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good luck.
Now we'll move on to item 15, which is consider a motion to approve resolution to restore legal load limits on certain bridges in Minnehaha County. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby again, highway superintendent. With the construction season wrapping up, we've completed three additional bridge construction projects that had previously posted load limits via ordinance. And so it's our intent today to pass a resolution to remove those legal, or those load limits and restore legal loads on those structures. The three structures in question are the Ellis Bridge, which is about a half mile south of Ellis on Highway 138, and then the two 121 bridges just north of Eros on the Eros Road.
Thank you, DJ. Anyone have any questions? If not, does anyone have a motion? Move to approve. Second. A motion and a second to approve the legal load limits on the structures that are listed. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you have a question?
No, we can do it after the vote.
Okay. Let's make sure I got the vote. We do have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Commissioner Kelly, you have a comment?
I'd just like to compliment the highway department for what they've gotten done with bridges in the last two years, and particularly that Baltic, that Baltic, those 121, because you couldn't even drive your car over those previously.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
I think people appear, feel very confident with your plan and your ability to get our bridges back to reasonable condition. And the long-range plan is well documented, and we appreciate your management of that.
Thank you.
Yep. Next item.
Item 16 is consider adoption of Minnehaha County Graphic Standards Manual and Letterhead Templates. Briefing was on November 26. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Human Services. Last week, Ken McFarland briefed you guys on the changes with the logo and the seal, and just going over the graphic standards that are out there, which creates a uniform identity for the county. And I guess I would answer any questions that you have. I believe that you all have a copy of what we've gotten. We have it set up so that we're ready to go with the electronic templates for everybody. Everything's pretty much ready to go with the printers that's out there. We appreciate the support from IT, because they got, you know, the devil's in the details, and they kind of got some of those dropped on them. But I think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Carol. Questions, Commissioner Kelly?
The compatibility between Apple and...
Yeah, we got that worked out. I guess I'm speaking for Monty.
He's shaking. Is that yes? Any other questions? Is there a motion to...
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the graphic standards in the letterhead. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good job, Carol.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign the Fusion Center lease agreement between First Dakota National Bank and Minnehaha County. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioners, Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. Included in your packets, a copy of the lease. This is basically just a renewal with First Dakota National Bank for a five-year period. I'd be willing to answer any questions that you have regarding this item.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone have any questions about renewing the lease? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Fusion Center lease. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item 18 is consider a motion to transfer $5,000 from the Commissioner's Contingency Fund to the Commission Office Budget ASN 15094, Community Projects for the Sioux Falls Tomorrow 3 Project. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. On October, excuse me, November 5th, the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation was here and made a request for you to sponsor Sioux Falls 3 Planning Project in the amount of $5,000. And at that time, they indicated that other financial sponsors and partners that they would approach would be the Sioux Empire United Way, Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, the City of Sioux Falls, and the Sioux Falls School District, along with Lincoln County. At that, at that time, you indicated that you indeed wished to support that endeavor in the amount of $5,000 coming out of the Commissioner's Contingency Fund. And following up on that, we're just, excuse me, coming back with a motion to formally transfer that $5,000 from the Commissioner's Contingency Fund into the Commission Budget ASN 15094, Community Support, from which we would cut the check and send that on and formally provide that support that you had previously indicated that you wanted to provide.
Thank you, Robert. Any comments? If not, like a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer to the Sioux Falls Tomorrow 3 Project. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Item number 19 is consider adoption of county vehicle maintenance, replacement, and transfer policy. The briefing was on November 26, 2013. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, again, Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. And again, last week, Ken briefed you on this, this policy and the work that's gone into developing this over the last couple of months. Really, all departments that use a pool fleet of vehicles in some sense formed this committee to take a look at a vehicle maintenance, replacement, and transfer policy at the direction of the commission. And we've attached that policy here in the form that it came out of the deliberations and the work of that committee. And the, some of the highlights of that policy is that looked at a recommendation that departments would consider... that looked at a recommendation that departments would consider replacing sedans, light vans, light trucks, and SUVs at either eight years of age or 150,000 miles of use. That was a, that age and mileage changed in response to some concerns and some dialogues that originally, a lower mileage limit and a shorter timeframe would be maybe a little impractical for a number of the vehicles that we do use and continue to get good service out of, within a number of our departments. So that was a discussion point among the committee. Another one is that the, the policy would include a form that departments would complete and submit at budget time if they are considering replacement or purchase of a vehicle during the coming budget year. Then, a copy of that form is also attached to the policy and would be completed and submitted at budget time for any department that was anticipating vehicle purchases in the following budget year. And the, the final main point of this, or main highlight of the proposal or the policy would be that any transfer of vehicles between policies, between departments, would provide a process for that transfer, both for the transferring title and as well as an accounting transfer before, between departments. And this policy would, proposal as currently drafted, would take effect on January 1st of 2014. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone have any questions?
I will say that I was on that committee and I strongly encouraged rewriting of this policy and prioritizing the vehicle purchases, because I think with limited resources, we need to prioritize by age and mileage and not who has the most gifted conversation of needing vehicles. So I think this is a black and white way for us to address that, and it adopts a policy that'll help us in the long run, long range to be able to keep up with what we need to keep up with, so. Commissioner Kelly?
If I recall, we've been working on this about nine months, which means that getting something through the county is like birthing a baby.
If we went by age and mileage, only John and Cindy would be here.
Thanks, John.
I was going to say something about the?
They're leaking out.
Yeah. The damage that you have on the back of your head this morning from falling down, so just don't let it go to the public. Unfortunately, Mr. Barth has some staples back there that look very painful from an accident, so we're glad that you're here, though. Thank you. That's very nice of you. Any other comments besides Jeff's head?
Well, just to point out, on the policy, it is just a policy, and, you know, there are some vehicles out there that could be at less than 150,000 miles or maybe pushing eight years, and I think at any one of those circumstances, we're going to take it on a, it's a commission action. We're going to make the decision, but routinely at budget time, I can imagine that we're going to be hearing, well, you know, we're at eight years now, so we got to get rid of these, and we got to add five new cars to our budget. You know, the reality is that it's ultimately this commission's decision, and it's just a policy. That's the way I view it.
Commissioner Pecus, and I would point out that it is worded as a recommends consider replacement at those benchmarks.
Right.
How many cars are out of compliance? If you say compliance, it's not the right word, but?
I know we ran this early part of the year, and at that point, we were doing a standard of 100,000 miles rather than 150,000. I don't have that, that information at the tip of my fingers. I could get that for you.
I do know we have one Ford pickup that has 980-some thousand miles on it.
But we can't find it.
No.
It's parked over at the museum. It's on.
It would fly our champion.
I think we've lost control. We have a motion, I believe.
No, we don't.
We don't?
No.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the policy as written. Anyone have any other comments? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. We'll go to the liaison reports. Does anyone have any liaison reports at this point? Commissioner Barth?
We have a couple vacancies on the museum board of people who are term limited, and I have reviewed some applicants for that, and we'll bring that to the commission later.
Super. Any other liaison reports? If not, new business? Old business? If not, we do need to go into executive session for personnel, contract negotiations, and litigation.
It's my motion, sir.
All right, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to go into exec session for those few items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I'll be back here at 10 o'clock.